All right, everybody. Thank you for coming. We're going to start the Select Board Agenda for Thursday, July 13th, 2023. Present, we have Denise, we have Meg, Alec, and myself. Is Kevin going to join by Zoom, or was he going to try?
I don't think so.
I don't think he was going to be able to.
No, he's on vacation.
Okay. All right, and then we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, I mean, the United States of America, and to the public where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for those of you that aren't familiar with how I run meetings, I try to power through them quickly, so let's start right off with appointments. We have an appointment of Joseph, Joseph Knight, as a professional full-time firefighter, paramedic, and in the Northern Fire Department.
Hello.
Hello.
So this is Joe Knight, we're requesting his appointment provisionally. Joe grew up in San Diego, he moved to Massachusetts about 13 years ago, I'm close to his family. He's lived in Franklin, North Attlebar, and most recently, he lives in Milford, so. Just recently became a certified paramedic, about, what, three weeks or so ago?
It's been a month or two now.
Yeah, okay, no, it was close. And he works for Bruce Ramelons in Framingham. He's also a call firefighter in Hopeville as well, so he has some firefighting experience too, so. Our medical director actually emailed us an outstanding reference for him, which he's never done before, so. So I have no doubt he'll fit in and be a great asset to our department, so, thank you.
Joe, would you like to say anything? You don't have to. That pretty much covers it. I mean, I learned about this department from the medical director when I was doing my clinicals at Sturdy Hospital. It seems like a great town, it seems like a great service, and I'm glad to be part of it. Thank you.
Welcome.
And where are you living now?
Living in Milford. When my lease is up, I'm planning to move to Norton now, so. Are there any questions from the board? I'd be looking for a motion to appoint. I'll make a motion to appoint Joe Knight as provisional full-time fire, fire paramedic.
I'll second.
All right, motion and second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hopefully, we won't see you. Hopefully, I won't meet you ever.
Congratulations.
Welcome to Norton, Joseph Knight.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome to Norton.
All right, next up, we have the appointment of Jared Farrar as the Highway Superintendent.
I believe Jared has 12 years.
Been here, Jared, lived in Norton all his life, went to school here. He's been working with the Highway Department for 10 years. He's been a foreman for two years. His family has the background of all construction, so he's really good with the construction out of the town. He's been doing my job for past probably six months, and then he gave me the ropes, and he's doing really well with it, and I think he'd be a good fit for the town, for the job.
Excellent. You don't have to say anything, Jared, but if you'd like to.
No, I don't have much to say, only that I've learned a lot from Keith over the past 10, 11 years, and I appreciate the opportunity and excited to do what I can for the town.
The only problem, guys, is I'm Portuguese, you're Italian.
All right, so unless there's any other questions, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jared Farrar as Highway Superintendent.
Second.
All right, motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? All right, congratulations. Hold on one second, we have one more thing. So you can come.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jumping this right up?
Yeah, we're scooting this one up here.
Okay. So we have a proclamation for Mr. Keith Silver that tomorrow is officially your last day, right? Retirement day. So the proclamation, whereas Keith Silver's 31-year career with the Town of Norton Highway Department has been the gold standard for excellence in service, whereas Keith was hired as a driver laborer on December 9th, 1991, and went on to be appointed as equipment operator in April of 1994, interim highway superintendent on October 26th, 1998, and highway superintendent on May 22nd, 2000. And whereas, during his distinguished 31-plus years of service, Keith has been a dedicated public servant, an active member of the community, and a man devoted to his family, friends, and the town that he loves. Whereas today, the Town of Norton presents this proclamation to Keith as the town celebrates and reflects upon his many accomplishments, as well as his leadership, friendship, and untiring service. Be it resolved that the Select Board of the Town of Norton does hereby proclaim Friday, July 14th, 2023, to be Keith Silver Day. It encourages all residents to thank this lifelong Norton resident for his untiring service, his commitment to the betterment of our community, and to wish him continued success and happiness in his retirement from public service, given under its hand this 13th day of July, 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Keith.
Thank you. Thanks for everything.
What the hell would go, Keith?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for your service.
All right. Moving on, we have the appointment of Antonio De Freias. Is it De Freias?
Yes.
Okay. As the Planning and Economic Development Director.
I expected Tony here, but he couldn't pick him up, he couldn't make it. Tony is a registered land surveyor, and he worked in the field for 29 years, and he's been the town planner in Hanson the last two years. And I was at a meeting today, and the Hanson Town Administrator was there, and I could hear from behind someone saying, "I have a bone to pick with you." And she said, because I stole her town planner, and they're obviously hard to find, and I thanked her for doing the great training that they did, and she was explaining everything that he's done for the Town of Hanson, and it's all stuff, the exact same things that we're working towards here, so it'll be a great fit. And I know Brian, I'm glad to have someone working with him, I want to thank Brian. It's been a few times now that Brian's had to step up and hold the department together while we were looking for a town planner, and he's done a great job with that. Now, everything has moved along smoothly during that, the interim, and I really appreciate all the work that Brian's done for that.
All right. Anybody who's seen our meetings knows that I sing Brian's praises every chance I get, he definitely has stepped up. So Brian, do you want to say anything about the, have you met the name?
I have not met him.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for everything you do, and we all appreciate it. So do you want to vote on this? Do you want to make the appointment?
I just have a question. He is a, any?
Registered land surveyor.
Land surveyor.
Any further questions? Someone wants to make a question.
I'll make a motion, appointment of Antonio M. De Freias as Planning and Economic Development Director.
I'll second.
Come on, come on, come on. So we have a motion and a second without further discussion, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Oh, oh, hold on, we'll stick it back. Yeah, that's my, I thought I missed something.
Antonio, welcome to Norton.
So, yeah, so Tony, now that we approved you. We may have a few questions.
Steve Park is a little tough on Thursday's.
Yes.
So, so, I know we already.
When we get to New Town Hall, it'll be fine.
We already did the appointment, but if there's any questions that the board would like to ask.
Do you have any, like a five-year plan, or any vision of what you see Norton moving towards? Anything changes you foresee?
I haven't had the opportunity to sit down and look at that just yet. But I will.
Can I ask what attracted you to Norton?
Close to home, I see it's a town that's.
Where's home?
Stuff. So I also see that Norton's a town that's moving, I say, I say moving and shaking, doing a lot of good things, new town hall, new industrial park, close to the highway, see a lot of activity going on in Norton, which means it's the kind of town that is accepting of ideas and looking towards its future. See, also, that you're, hit your 10% for your affordable housing, so that's a big, that's big when it comes to this, in Massachusetts, most towns haven't even come close, so it's a good thing. So that's one of the reasons that I think the successful towns are the ones that are doing things and understand that change happens, change comes, and you need to get ahead of it, or you get left behind because of it.
Excellent, thank you. Good statement. Any further questions?
Have you worked in towns that have any big milestone projects that you've done, that you've involved in?
Well, my first part of my career was 30 years in civil engineering, land surveying field, I'm actually a registered land surveyor in Massachusetts. So in 2021, I decided to transition to the municipal side because I saw that as I was on the, we'll say, this side of the table during the presentations, I felt that there was a lot of town planners that lacked a lot of technical expertise in understanding what was being presented to towns. Also saw that there was errors being done, or developers sort of getting, getting things through the town because they lacked knowledge in the plans, didn't understand what they were looking at. So I thought that I could maybe bring something to the table, so I transitioned over, 2021, to the municipal side. So basically, I had about two years' experience on the municipal side, but what I did in the current community that I'm in is have the action plans, have the CMTA regulations, implemented some zoning amendments to address issues that they have there, also some other issues that the town faces with some logistics of certain buildings, so some of the milestones that started, and just recently had the amendments approved that made town. So I work with all the boards as, that have to do with building, the Select Board also liaisons, the Economic Development Committee.
Excellent. All right, excellent. Well, before you came in, we appointed you.
You could have said anything, actually.
I know. I'll try to get you, but. My wife said, she'd gone on the website, and she said, "You realize your name's already up on the website?" I'm like, "Really? Okay." But, okay. I appreciate the board confidence.
Yep.
I had a town manager's meeting today. Unfortunately, Lisa Green was there, so she was giving me a hard time, but she was praising you and congratulating me on.
Stealing.
Stealing my hair. I thanked her for the training that she did.
Well, yeah, a lot of towns are looking for town planners, so it's not easy.
There are quite a few, yeah.
Yeah, you know, what I hope to bring to the planning board into the town is, like I said, that technical experience is a big thing, I think, because when a developer brings a plan forward, you have to understand what you're looking at. If I can explain that and educate and assist the planning board and administration, so it's control law, I think it's a big help. I think it also tends to maybe save a little bit of money because of certain plans, like they say, "Well, this is what you're looking at." You know, I mean, I'm a registered land surveyor in Mass, so everything that goes, went before any of the boards, Conservation Board of Health, Planning, Zoning, I presented plans, I comprehensive permits, did all that, drainage design, so all of us in that. Obviously, economic development, it's, you know, the learning curve a little bit. That's the one, it's a little bit of a learning curve, but, you know, being able to look at a business and determine what are your needs, and being able to look at what Norton may have available, I think will help in being able to plug them into the right location.
Excellent. We have a great board, the EDC, that'll be helpful with that too, to help you along. And you have Brian, so you're starting to add an advantage, so.
Yep. Good to have, you know, experience in the office already, and that with Mr. Unis, who came from the same field I did, and Mr. Iafredi, I have to know his dad very well, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Congratulations. All right, up next, we have the appointment of Benton Keane as Constable for the Town of Norton. I'm not sure about this one.
How you doing?
All right, if any. So I expected Mike to say something, but he just ran away. Does anybody have any questions for Ben?
Tell us why you want to be the Constable of Norton.
So I worked for the Sheriff's Office for 35 years doing civil processing, and since I retired from the Fire Department, they knew I retired, and they weren't hiring much more help when people were leaving, so I actually was more in the data than what I was, basically becoming a full-time job. And I really didn't like that, that, you know, to put the commitment in five days a week. I felt that wasn't the best interest of the department all myself, so I decided, absolutely, so I left a few weeks ago. But I still have, I do a lot of work for landlords and some of the local attorneys, have some of those clients that would love me to still serve papers, but it's going to be, you know, really hard time, not five days a week. And I enjoy it, it gets me out of the house. So even, even though I worked 35 years, I didn't, so you can't double lift, so there's no, there's no retirement, so, as I was per year. Anyways, I always enjoyed it, and so I hope to continue. Appreciate your support.
Great.
Excellent. Anyone else?
I just can personally speak for Mr. Keane, he's known me my whole life, and he's probably the most qualified of any constable that I, any other constable.
I would like to think so. I actually have attorneys call me for the place.
Yeah.
I'm not surprised.
Yeah.
I've seen everything. I've sent my, some, some of my information, but yeah, I've pretty much served any paper that could be served, from federal court to district court to pro gaming.
Mike, do you have anything to add, or?
Nope, just say that we did have a report back from the police chief on background check on the applicant.
Didn't know if I was going to.
Everything was.
All right, excellent.
So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Benton Keane III as Constable for the Town of Norton.
A second.
All right, the motion is second. Any discussion? Nope. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, I guess we have an appointment to the Recreation Commission now.
There's been a request, two appointments, and we did receive an email from the Director of the Parks and Rec, Melissa Nizelak, and she has asked that Megan Bessick be appointed as a permanent member to the Park and Rec Commission, and Emily Anderson be appointed as.
Do you have those names? For, for the motion? Oh, you got it.
I do. Are they here?
Are they here?
So. Make a motion to appoint Emily Anderson to the permanent position, and Megan Bessick to the alternate position of.
The other way around?
Yeah, the other way around.
The other way around.
Megan. Megan, the email.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a bit different. So Megan is a permanent, and Emily is the.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Megan Bessick as the permanent member of Norton Park and Rec, and Emily Anderson as alternate member of Norton Park and Rec.
A second.
All right, motion and second?
Couldn't wait.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, excellent.
Oh, aye, sorry.
I thought I heard you say.
I thought I did.
I heard. All right, next up, we have a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors to discuss and or vote on the appointment of Michael Tool for the Board of Assessors. So if the board's here, they can come on up.
I'll let the board. Call the board or whatever.
Yeah, they have to call their meeting.
Good evening.
Got the form? We do. Form two. All right, so you can call your meeting to order, and then we can.
Sure.
It's 7:22, I'd like to call the meeting for the Assessors to order.
Second.
Later. Aye. Okay. Thank you. We're here tonight to complete our third member, we'll get appointed tonight. It's been a little bit, I don't know if people know about assessors, but it's a pretty straightforward, you know, it's procedural work, but obviously, you need a majority vote to move things forward. And we've had, for much at least the last couple of years, two people on. Unfortunately, we lost a great, great, actually, he was phenomenal to the, to the department and to the board, it was Jim Riley, and so since that time, we've been kind of catching up with getting members, losing a member. We had two members prior to my coming on that had a lot of institutional knowledge as well. So we're just trying to build a team that can, you know, get the work done, and Denise is leading us, and so we're here tonight to hopefully get our third member on board and move the town's business as needed.
All right, excellent. Mr. Tool, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, thank you. To the Select Board and to the Assessors, it's, I'm familiar with the work these assessors have done, or do. I know the certifications that need to come along with it, and I'm willing to participate in the certifications. Some of them have to happen immediately, but then there's a two-year onboarding after that. And I think it's an important part of the town, and I think many of you know, I've always committed to the service of the town. I believe in helping out, this is a board that is important to the town, and that's why I kind of threw my name in to fill that vacancy. I was, I mean, he may not admit it, but Mr. Sonya was one of the people that said, "You know, you have to think of joining the assessors," and I talked to him, I think I talked him into it, and he's.
I talked him into it.
And he's regretted me, regretted me talking him into it ever since, but he's done a great job, so I'm hoping to finish up the board if they're appointed. With your pleasure.
Any questions from the board?
Just one quick question, can you just provide an overview of what the role is?
Sure. So we, we vote on, what we primarily do is vote on all of the abatements that you see coming through. So if someone has a tax abatement or deferment, we get a recommendation from the Assessor Office, and we review it and vote it. And there are a lot of them, especially busy season, so that's what, I mean, Rich and I generally agree, thankfully, but if we didn't, we could have a third tiebreaker, and it is a lot of work. Actually, we have to review all these abatements for errors and all that, and it's, it's a lot before eyes, so, you know, to get a third person on the board.
There are busier times of the, of the year than others. You know, the group, the department, really, you know, you talk about profit taxes, excise taxes, but there's also, you know, formal documents that have to work through the Treasuries, Office, the Assessors, so it's paperwork, systems, and there are, you know, some subjective, you know, things that we do address, you know, work off programs for our residents, we manage that, and we work with Mike's, Mike as well.
These gave me away from the job, thank you.
Mike? This guy, this guy, Mike, Mike has really caught on, he's done a great job, and Denise has been, I mean, her knowledge is really helpful, extremely helpful, so. I always say when we, we have the joint meetings with the assessors, they're the only commission and board committee in town that actually have to be certified, so they have to take classes and be certified, and it's the only one.
How long does that take?
Well, there's, there's a minimum requirement of, let's say, the first pass, there's 10 modules, and those are probably 35, 40 hours of studying and taking the test, and then from there, there are other modules and more experience, but there's a minimum.
All right, anything else? All right, if not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mike Tool to Board of Assessors.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
No.
Just call the meeting.
You have to vote to them.
I thought we voted along with you guys.
No, yeah.
Oh, okay, sure.
I'd like to make a motion to. No, you just have to vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we have to. We only get to sit and share everything. Stop the eyes across the table.
There we go. And I guess we'll.
Got six ayes.
Make a motion to call.
Aye.
Make a motion to call the Board of Assessors meeting adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is 7:28.
That is, two people.
Very much, thank you.
We can just do it on the line? Thank you.
So I guess. Thank you very much. So we had, we had a late addition to the agenda here. We had the groundbreaking for the Town Hall tonight, and the Permanent Building Committee has been doing a fantastic job. I'm sorry? So we have, we have Jim here, if he wants to add anything, if he wants to come up and say anything. Jim is the Chair of the Permanent Building Committee.
Good evening, I'm sort of talking a little out of turn because Mike has the big announcement, and I just wanted to reinforce it, but I guess I'm going to make the big announcement, and he'll reinforce it. We have an opening on the Building Committee. Bob Maderos has moved to Dartmouth, and he stepped down from the Board of Health, and he stepped down from our committee, and there's a vacancy, and I know how hard it is to fill vacancies on committees in this town, but I'm here to give you a bunch of propaganda that this would be a nice entry-level committee to be on. There's no heavy lifting anymore, most of the heavy lifting is done, but probably we'll just have to do some change orders, which will be to save money, not increase spending, as far as I'm hoping. We meet like once a month, usually the last Monday of the month, if you are already tied up with Lions Club or something else on Monday nights. We can change the night of the meeting because I, I want to change it because I ski on Monday nights, and I didn't get to ski last year, so please, if you're really thinking of trying to get involved in town politics and things that go on, there's a lot of nice people you meet, not necessarily me, but a lot of other people. We all work as a team, we had the emergency at the site for the Town Hall on Monday night, it was all solved by Tuesday at noon time, based on Mike, our town manager, the Fire Department, the Building Committee, the Health Department, the OPM, for the, everything got solved within 24 hours, and it was because of the teamwork on the building side of the events and the town. The town people were elected or appointed officials are absolutely wonderful to get it done. So please. So please, if you're at least a bit interested, please give your name to the select board. We'll gladly take you, we'll gladly guide you. And I do not run the meetings much past seven-thirty, so if you're an early-go-to-bed person, I'll get you out of there usually at seven-thirty. We haven't had anything that's really gone wrong, so it's, and we meet at six, usually six to seven-thirty, so that's probably all you have to really know. Those are all the boxes to check off whether you want to be there or not want to be there. But please, these two buildings are very important. We need the people that are on the board to help make some of the decisions. We value everybody's input, we weigh that input and we use it, and we're here to save the taxpayers' money on a new town hall and a new senior center and community center. The second thing I'm here for is to give the select board an update. Obviously, we broke ground two hours ago at the new town hall. They've cleared all the trees out, we've discovered many manholes. That's what was our first problem was, it seems that on every town site, there's a lot of mystery digging that went on in the forties and fifties and sixties that nobody really knew about, and we're coming to find out what it is. The high school project that I, that I sat on the board there, we found drainage, we found a stump, we found three stump dumps that required yanking out and refilling. We found some conduits that didn't belong. Now that's happening at the town hall site, and I said I wouldn't go longer than the opening ceremony, so.
Holding you to it.
Are you timing me?
I am, I am, over time, over time.
So let's not do anything more. I appreciate everybody that's helping, I mean, everybody's come together, the call goes out and everybody's there, and it's for the good of the town and the good of the taxpayers, and I'll entertain any questions at this time.
So I could, I could say as the select board member that's on the permanent building committee, you definitely do try to get them, get us out of there by seven-thirty every single time. So, yeah, I appreciate that.
I want to thank him for everything that he does.
Yeah.
Mr. Slattery, thank you for everything that
I'm only the captain, I'm only the captain of the team, everything's done by a team.
And you put a lot
You can't win a game without a team, and that's what we have. And it's not only the board, it's the town employees, it's everything else. I know when I step into a few offices in town, all of a sudden, everybody picks up their phone and heads out the back door, right?
Well, what I do like
As he looks at the fire department.
I can tell you, I do like that you, you visit the sites multiple times per week for each one, and you, you report back at every meeting, every time we have a meeting.
Yeah.
It's, it's good to know that somebody's, you know, watching these things.
Yeah, I, I got criticized by a board, I would say, a comment by a board member about whether it's appropriate that I visit. But we're spending the taxpayers' money, I want to make sure you get your money's worth. I finally realized that I can't speed up the contractor, for those of you who go zipping by on one-forty and still see just concrete forms and nothing else, but hopefully, you're going to see some wooden walls in two weeks, because talking to Beth today, she wants that building up before the town hall, and talking to the people at the town hall, the contractors, they want to beat the senior center because they drive by it every day and wonder what's going on. So we'll see what happens. I'm hoping that both buildings, probably at this time next year, will be in them, and everybody will be happy, and I can go skiing in the wintertime.
So I can say, I can say from, I, I manage projects all over the state and the Rhode Island, and I know it's difficult to get somebody to go out there and put eyes on something, you know, so often, and that will make the contractors either work better, work faster, work harder, even if you're not saying anything, you just go there, they know you're going to go there. So that, I personally appreciate you spending all the time to do that.
Thank you.
I think, I think it helps, I think it helps keep everything on time, and it keeps it under budget, I think.
Yeah, it was, I surprised the vice president of the contracting firm for the senior center. I guess everybody was at lunch today, and an old guy in shorts and a work vest was walking around the site, and he started to drive around the site and wondered who the old guy was. And I introduced myself, and he went, oh, and he told me who he was, and I don't remember, but he's, the vice president is something for Seals, so I went, well, everything, I was positive, I wasn't the regular Jim Slattery. Just said, yep, everything's going fine, we should be a lot further on, but with all the inspections in the room.
Thank you for that.
It's enough for me. Thanks for giving me the
Anybody else have questions?
I had one quick question for either Jim or Mike, I'm not sure which, I didn't come prepared for this, but with the opening, I thought, I recall for the permanent building committee, that there were certain criteria that had to be met for backgrounds.
All else being equal, there are, the committee should have someone that's a builder or in that field, an architect or engineer, I think there's an attorney, so.
Do we have any of those criteria?
We have an architect, engineer, we have someone that's involved in the building trades. We don't have an attorney. Do you know
Do you know any attorneys?
I know we've got someone that had experience with building projects before, and then we have the representatives from the select board and the health agent.
Nothing, nothing against a criteria, but I think at this stage of the game, I don't want to limit anybody that's interested. I talk because I'm probably the least qualified person there. I mean, I worked construction when I was eighteen years old till I was twenty-two. I'm familiar with the construction stuff, I have an interest, I have the time, I just, I'm not an attorney, I never slept with one, so, you know, if we got an attorney that won't give us billable hours, fine, but.
All right, well, thank you very much, Jim.
Yeah, thanks.
And anybody interested, contact Mike Units.
Right, so as Jim said, with the retirement, the retirement, our moving out of town of Bob Maderos, Bob served on a lot of committees for a number of years, and so we have two vacancies, the building committee and Board of Health, so if anyone's interested in contact me or contact the health agent for the Board of Health, I'd be very interested.
Excellent, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next up, we have the minutes for June twenty-second. Everybody have a chance to look those over?
Make a motion.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve minutes, including but not limited to June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
All right, motion of the second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Abstentions? Excellent. Now we're on to licenses and permits. We have a one-day all alcohol liquor license to Michelle Peterson for a public event at Everett Leonard Park from two P.M. to five P.M. on Saturday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
And that's the celebration of Tommy Peterson.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve a one-day all alcohol liquor license to Michelle Peterson for a public event at Everett Leonard Park from two P.M. to five P.M. Saturday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion of the second, is there any discussion on this one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Excellent. So now we have a one-day all alcohol liquor license to Ross Barton for a private event at Everett Leonard Park from twelve P.M. to four P.M. on Sunday, September tenth. I'm getting tired.
I don't have the
A motion, make a motion to vote to approve the one-day all liquor license to Ross Barton for a private event at Everett Leonard Park from twelve to four on Sunday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Perfect. The next one is, okay, I'm going to set this up for you. I'm looking for a motion to approve a one-day all alcohol liquor license to Chad Dubach for a private event at Everett Leonard Park from twelve P.M. to six P.M. on Saturday, August fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
I will make a motion to approve the one-day all alcohol liquor license to Chad Dubach for a private event at Everett Leonard Park from twelve P.M. to six P.M. on Saturday, August fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Second.
Second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Excellent. Now, I'm looking for a motion to approve the special events application for the Rodman Ride for Kids scheduled for Saturday, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, from eight A.M. to three P.M.
I'll make a motion to vote to approve the special events application for the Rodman Ride for Kids scheduled for Saturday, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, from eight A.M. to three P.M.
I'll just say, I've participated in this, it's an amazing event, so.
Excellent.
All should. My second.
There you go. A motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Excellent. So now we're on to announcements. So anyone have any announcements? Couple mine up there, does anybody have anything?
I'd love to get an update, Mike. I don't know if you have it under town manager's report on the Whole Market Foods.
So
Do you have anything on that?
I can tell you that Whole Market Foods has put signs inside the property, direct vehicles around back, and we're trying to arrange a meeting. The person that handles that location has been out sick, so before the next meeting, we hope to meet with them. Then they're also completing a sound study that we hope to
Did they, did they agree to do that? To do the sound study? Because I know they agreed for a bunch of other signs, and they, they didn't put them in, so.
They did agree with the sound study with Board of Health, and they're working on that, and we want to meet with them out there, myself and the deputy fire chief, the deputy and the safety officer from the police department, to talk about the signs out of the street, and we'll get, we'll put that in.
Okay, so another thing I wanted to bring up to everybody is the, I've been asked by several members of the community for the past several weeks about the extended stay situation. And I do believe, I'd like to throw it out there, that maybe we think about possibility of some sort of integration program to facilitate these, these new people coming in. Today, at my shop down the street, they had a couple come in and ask for a job, and they don't speak English. And I don't know the status of the papers or anything. So I don't know if we can rattle the cage a little bit more with the housing and living communities people, to see if there are any integration programs that they're doing for these people, because I love that they want to work, you know, how can we put them to work? You know, they're, they're looking to integrate into communities, how do we get ahead of that?
That's one of the things they're working, the person from that agency said they're working to see how they can get them papers so they can work, legal working papers. They're also working on, they feed them, obviously, provide food, provide other assistance, they're going to be providing them with housing assistance, so they're not sure how long people are going to be there, but I will reach out to them again and ask them.
So, so adding on to that, I know that when, when that started being used for that reason, the town wasn't notified, and I think that's where a lot of the questions from the, the residents are coming. I mean, I personally got a, a couple every week asking about it, and I know you had sent an email trying to find out exactly how many people are there, how many school-aged children are in, how many, you know, what, how it's going to impact the town. And I know in Taunton, I believe they, what hotel was it? It's not a hotel.
Holiday Inn, the old Holiday Inn.
Clearian Motel.
Yeah, they closed it.
Right.
So it's not, it's, it's an apartment building now, so the repercussions of that are, in my mind, and I know Alec and I, Alec mentioned it, about taxes, I mean, would that be a different tax bracket or different? That's something we need to look into, if that's going to be the case with the extended stay, so. Anything to study your thunder?
No, that's all right, I just think it's more important to integrate these people, so they're not, they're wandering up and down South Washington Street, and they're looking for direction, they're looking for something. So how do we, how do we create a positive and help these people integrate? They're, they're, they want to work, and there's, clearly, the state, I don't know if there's something in place, you said there might be something in place, but they haven't
Well, they have children that are going to be integrated into the school system, so how are we going to?
There have been three, I think, registered in the school system.
There's six now.
Six.
Somebody just wanted to be able to help, and what can we do?
Yeah, and it would have been good to know from the state that that was happening, so we could prepare for it, too.
Well, that's what, that's what I told them, I said, you know, no notice at all, I mean, I know there's nothing we can probably do about it, but at least let us know, we don't know what services we're going to have to provide, human services, education, whatever, and no one says anything, they just, all of a sudden, we find out, we issue first certificates that those people live in there.
So we found out eventually that Taunton had a nine-year lease for that, and I know you reached out, and they, they don't have a lease, they don't have an agreement, but there's, there's got to be something.
Do you have an agreement with a third-party vendor? Can we get the agreement from the state with the third-party vendor?
Right.
And then subsequent, the contract with the third-party vendor?
Yeah, they'll have to give it to us eventually.
Yes.
So I play devil's advocate, and I don't see this any different than if there was a natural disaster in the state of New Hampshire, and there's influx of people from New Hampshire that needed housing that, that came here. I wouldn't expect them to tell us, hey, we have a natural disaster, we're all coming down to the industrial parks and move into your thing, and you have kids that are going to go to the school system. I don't know that we would treat this any differently, right?
We, we want to know that, too. I mean, if anybody coming into the town, especially, in a natural disaster, that specific instance, you would still want to know how many people are coming, you want to prepare the schools, you want to prepare the town.
Well, I mean, the, the building is established for extended stay, right? So we should always assume that potential is always there, that you could have families that come in, that stay there for extended periods of time, that have children, that go to the school system, et cetera, et cetera. That's, that's how that building is designed, it's not
At least for thirty days, not for, you know, not for, it's different, there's a different tax bracket for those, too, whereas it's a, it's a lodging house as opposed to a rental house. So if they're, if, and that's the reason to get the lease, if they have a lease for nine years, then, then that's a lease, and that's going to be a different tax bracket that, that building has to pay the tenant.
And I think, and not in your scenario, Denise, I think, I mean, if they're coming from New Hampshire, they're already U.S. citizens, you know, they're in the whole thing, yeah.
I don't think we should assume negativity because they come from outside the U.S.
That wasn't negative?
No, I know.
I'm not saying that, I'm not implying it either.
No, I know, but they, they came here the right way, right, to the state, the state has, has put them there. They didn't come here illegally.
Yeah. That's for a different, different board. All right, anything else for announcements? No.
Okay.
No. All right, we're on to new business. We had a public hearing that was canceled, and the reason, Mike, again?
The notice deadlines weren't met, so it'll be rescheduled to another meeting.
Now we're on to year-end business. This is easy, right?
Yeah, I'll just report that last night, I met with the finance committee, and we did six reserve fund transfers to close out the year. No further action is needed by the board.
All right, we've presented Keith Silver the proclamation. Now we're on to review and vote to accept the two thousand twenty-three comprehensive emergency management plan. I think we have the chief here?
Yeah.
Ray Cord.
So we're just requesting that the board accepts and signs the updated emergency management plan. Every community in Commonwealth is required to have one. They recommend that we update it every three to five years, because, you know, key members of the communities and elected officials and so forth change, so that it's updated with the new signatures. For the most part, the only thing that's changed from our blast plan is updating the contact information for those type of people, so. contact information for those type of people, so.
So any questions?
Any questions, anyway, have?
Not me.
No.
We trusted.
I'm sorry?
We trusted.
I have the plan if you want to see it. Do you guys have the signature page?
Yep.
Available? Okay, good. I brought a copy just in case, so.
It's somewhere.
It's one of those.
Okay.
Yeah.
No rush.
Well, they're looking for that, just a quick, what is the plan? The purpose?
Yeah, so, oh, you want me to talk to you? The plan basically covers preparedness, mitigation, response, recovery for any type of major emergency or natural disaster that would typically involve multi-agencies participating, so that's, it's a base plan that would be integrated with the emergency operations plan, specific to whatever incident or situation that we happen to be dealing with.
I will tell you, the last time we did this in two thousand seventeen, I came in with a three-inch binder this thick. The state has revised their template, so it's a state-dictated template that we fill out, and we've also dovetailed it with the municipal vulnerability assessment plan that we worked out several years ago, it's under serpent's guidance, so everything meshes.
We're also in the process of developing a hazard mitigation plan as well, through the state with a twenty-five thousand dollar grant that we received, so we're probably about a year away from that.
It's not signed, though, if it's candidate signing.
So I'd like to make a motion to vote to adopt.
Oh, wait. Number five.
Oh, vote to accept the two thousand twenty-three comprehensive emergency management plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Chief, can we stay there for a second? If I could, another town manager's section, there was an ARPA request, and this is something that the fire department is looking to do, to provide kits in each building.
Correct.
Chief can go over that.
Yeah, so basically, it would be trauma kits in all of our major buildings, library, all the schools, town hall, and so forth. So it would be a trauma kit in a cabinet or something to hold it in. Hopefully, never, we never need it, but in the rare case that we would have a, you know, multi- casualty incident or an active shooter type of incident, it would be kits accessible to not only the civilians that happen to get around, but also be additional supplies that we can use when we got there as well.
What's in it?
Excuse me?
What's in, what's in the kit?
So generally, they're basic kits that just take care of like really serious things, so generally you see a lot of trauma dressings in there, tourniquets, chest seal-type dressings for puncture wounds, penetrating trauma, and then, you know, that's pretty much it, you're not going to find like Band-Aids and like little things in there, it's just to save somebody's life in the next ten minutes until we can get more different material for them, so. And we're all trained to integrate, and we have ballistic vests and helmets on all of our apparatus, we do frequent training with the police to basically go into what we call a warm zone while the situation is still active, to treat and hopefully extricate any individuals and people, so. And that's, there's been a lot of studies done on that, and it plays a huge role in saving as many lives as possible, because in the past, the building was cleared and then go in, and by that time, unfortunately, it was too late for a lot of the victims, so we've come a long way for that.
All right, that was an ARPA request?
Yeah, sixty-three hundred dollars.
Are we voting on that tonight, or is it?
If you could, I would hope that you would vote to support that, it would be a good effort to cover all those buildings.
Is that the only ARPA request you have tonight?
Yeah.
So, so we, you know, we can vote that now if you're, if you're over the mic.
I can make a motion to approve the ARPA requests for the emergency trauma.
Works. Trauma kits?
Kits?
Yeah.
In all the municipalities and schools?
Sixty-three hundred is it?
Yes.
And the amount is sixty-three hundred.
A second.
And it could be, it could be less once we start, we'll try to find the best prices and, you know, creative ideas for cases and stuff like that, but.
Perfect.
At a high end, that could be the number.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Fantastic idea.
Hopefully we never need it.
Fantastic idea.
Go ahead.
Okay, next we are on to discussion and vote to adopt processing fee for paper applications submitted to departments using the online permitting system.
And I believe you have a letter in your packet from the building commissioner. What happens is that people come in, they won't file online, and then the building commissioner's assistant has to input everything for them. So that's fine if someone wants to do that, but we, a lot of other towns have gone to this with a small charge, I believe was his recommendation, fifty dollars. If someone comes in and wants us to do that, we're on father. And the building commissioner is just looking for your support, vote to support that charge.
Any questions?
No. I just have one question. I mean, generally, I'm fine with the concept, but are a lot of the people that are doing this pay-per-work exercise individuals that are pulling their own permits and perhaps they don't know how, like, are computer savvy?
Actually, I don't believe that's the issue. I think it's more builders that are just lazy about doing it, and so they come in and have the staff do it for them.
Okay, so I don't want to penalize people, maybe I'm just not computer savvy.
I think some of it might be confusing.
Yeah.
I know it can be, when it first started, it can be. And if, on some of them, if you put the wrong thing in, and you go back, it erases all the previous stuff. I mean, I have no idea how this one is, but I know when I started applying for them years ago, it was dynamic.
Yeah. It's a big shift, right?
I just applied for one recently, and yeah, I mean, it's fairly straightforward, this one here. So, so I guess we need a motion. Okay.
You just need three, right?
Yeah.
I will motion to approve the exercise right of first, no, sorry, wrong one. I will vote to approve adopting the processing fee for paper applications submitted to departments using online permitting system.
So we want to be clear, the processing fee that you're requesting is fifty?
Fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Moving on. Discussion or vote to exercise right of first refusal for recreational use, chapter sixty-one B, section nine, property located at sixteen Guy Street. The assessor's parcel ID is fourteen dash fifty-two dash zero.
So this has been, this request has been sent to all departments to see if anyone had interest in us purchasing this land. There was no interest expressed. They do have this land under agreement for a significant amount of money, and if we wanted to purchase it, we would have to have a town meeting and appropriate money to purchase this property. Right now, my recommendation would be to not exercise your right of first refusal.
What is a significant amount of money?
That's nine hundred thousand.
These are all residential?
They're residential, I understand. Right now, there's a trotting track on there for horses on this property.
Where is Guy Street?
So what is off of Guy Street?
It's.
What track? I feel like.
Down off the North Washington.
North Wister.
I'm in North Wister, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so this is North Wister here. Just can't picture it.
After the President Street on the left-hand side of North Wister.
Oh, never noticed that before.
So if there are any more questions, I guess the motion would be to, to not invoke the right of first refusal, right?
And it's actually more than that than I said, it's eight ninety-nine plus another two hundred thousand, so one million dollars.
Okay, so, oh, yeah, I see that. I'd like to make a motion to vote to not exercise the right of first refusal on recreational use, chapter sixty-one B, section nine, property located at sixteen Guy Street, assessor's parcel ID fourteen dash fifty-two dash zero.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Excellent. So now we have the discussion and vote to set the fall annual town meeting.
I ask that you vote to set the fall annual town meeting for Monday, October twenty-third, at seven o'clock in the ice.
What day is it?
Monday, October twenty-third.
So I think we have to move the motion by what was written in the packet?
Okay.
If somebody wants to add a few.
So, do I make a motion? I move that the select board vote to schedule the fall annual town meeting for Monday, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, at seven PM at the Norton High School, and to accept warrant articles until three-thirty PM on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, at the select board's office, one minute, suppose, on the seventh, just made sure it's not nice, they would be seven. Six.
I second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Excellent. So other business, Jim should have been on our other business, but it's okay.
Yeah.
Do that a month earlier.
Do we have anything, any other business?
No.
All right, town manager's report.
Just one thing under the old business, I just want to let you know, on the code of conduct, I did send that around, I have received as of now, I think I, one comment, or two comments, I saw that another one came in after I left the town hall. So I asked everyone to respond back by the end of July, and I know the finance committee brought it up last night, and the chairman asked everyone to look at that, and I'll get, and I'll just forward you any suggestions that come along.
Great.
Excellent.
All right. Town manager's report, East Main Street improvements, well supposedly, they're going to do all the final grading, it's supposed to be done this week, and they plan on doing paving of the entire excavated area between July eighteenth and the twentieth of July, so hopefully they're on schedule of that. I know Kevin had asked about the Kingsbury Hill condominium, there's no movement on that, where we met quite a while back with representatives from Kingsbury Hill and their attorney, and their attorney has been ill, so waiting for him to get back, and he's going to prepare a letter for us with some updates for us, so nothing happening right now. And forty-seven Elm Street, I have reached out to Ann Brenniesley, it'll be great when the planning director is on board to keep the pressure on, to see where she's at, Devco. I know that the, we did receive seven hundred thousand dollars in grant money to help us out with the design of the soar going down Elm Street, so the Western Sampson is working on that design, and I hope to hear from Devco soon, I'll let you know as soon as I do hear from them. And on the town auction, so twenty-five properties were sold, at least twenty-two of the twenty-five, there were more than one bidder on the property.
That's good.
What happens to the unsold properties?
They just sit until we do another auction. So the total sales was one million eighty-one thousand, so that happened at the end of June, this discussion came up, I think, on last night, so the money won't be realized until this fiscal year, won't be certified as free cash until the fall of next year, so it won't be available this year. And I am going to ask the town council for guidance on the new Supreme Court ruling on the sale of tax titled properties, to see what effect it will have. At my town manager's meeting today, they said, whatever you do, sit on the money, don't spend it, because state's working on guidelines right now on what the parcels will have to be.
It was passed? It passed? Hello?
It was a Supreme Court decision, though. I don't know where the woman was from, but her property was foreclosed on, they sold it for tax title, they sold the property, and to, like, everyone does right now in Massachusetts, the town keeps the money, but the Supreme Court ruled that you can't do that, you have to keep whatever's owed for taxes, the rest of the money goes to whoever owns the property. So we'll wait and see what the guidance is going to be on that.
How many persons didn't sell?
Three.
It was the three. Were there any that might be viable for another Habitat for Humanities?
I don't know, to be honest with you.
Some were land, but not even.
Most, yeah, they were all, I think there was only one that actually had a building on, and the rest were vacant land. And, you know, the treasurer asked me before, and do you want me to set a minimum on these? I said, well, the main thing is we want to back on the tax rolls, so whatever you get above that is, is gravy, so, but they did all right, and we have to obviously pay our tax title attorney, and the auctioneer gets five or six percent, so we'll see what the final number is.
Good idea, Steve. If we could look into that, see, maybe I'll.
Yeah, I know they're finishing the one in Norton, and that's actually something that, if you're done, Mike, I can say that during the select board report and then.
I'm done.
Okay. I think the Habitat was looking to, you know how they put those, they're raising money, they put the thermometers to show how much? I think they were looking to maybe put that at the town common at some point. I think they're trying to raise at least another ten thousand, and I could be wrong about that.
I could win that some way, too.
Yeah, I can't remember where, yeah, heck. But that's just something, we don't have to vote on it tonight, I just, that's something that's going to come down the pike. I also have, we've been getting, well, I have, I'm sure everybody's heard this, people are adamant they want Founder's Day back, people really want it, so I think that's something that, if there's anything the select board can do, maybe we can step in. You know, I represent the Norton Business Association, so I know we're going to work on that as well. I'd like to partner with the EDC and whoever is kind of involved.
You talk about the thermometer, I just think that's what.
The same thing, exactly.
They put the thermometer up every year. So make some money that way.
We did have a meeting earlier this week on that, at the request of the Recreation Director, and the fire chief, deputy chief, myself, and I know she met today with the school department, because the main thing right now, first of all, is find out where.
Yeah.
So I'll get back to you on what the results were of that meeting of the school department today. The main thing, I think the focus was on having it at the middle school, so I'll see how that.
Yeah, I know there was issues with traffic or parking, I think there's something with that, right?
But there's only a couple places in town where you can, if you want fireworks, there's only a couple places that you can actually do it.
So, so speaking of fireworks, we were just at the groundbreaking, and I was talking to Senator Feeney, and apparently he used to be a pyrotechnic expert for like twenty-five years, so he actually could get us a discount on the fireworks, and I'm putting it publicly out there, so. Paul, you shouldn't have said that to me, buddy.
My main, my main thing is, I said to the rec director, I'll tell, I said, I'll tell you the same thing I've told the previous rec directors, that's not a recreation commission duty, there's enough for them to do. If people want to have Founder's Day back, you need a Founder's Day committee. And recreation can help, but they've got a lot on their plate, and that's way too much for them to be out there raising.
Or have a reservoir, we can't do something like on one of those islands?
Well, I was talking about that today.
That's what, I joked with that, I said, we could go to barge out on the reservoir and shoot them off, but there's nowhere for people to watch.
Well, that's the thing, Senator Feeney said that there are companies that have these small barges that can come out, but yeah, there's no place to park or to watch it, so that's.
That's what we're going to build, the nice little like, restaurant dock area.
And I mean, I can speak for a small business in town, I know there are several that are itching to contribute to get this going, because it was such a great thing for the town.
She's probably looking at about twenty thousand fireworks.
How much is left in it? Wasn't there a fund still remaining?
I don't know, I'd have to check.
And I had one other thing, last month was Pride Month, and I know that there was a lot of issues with the signs on the common, and several of them were stolen. a lot of issues with the signs of the common, and several of them were stolen. I think that the town did a great job coming together, trying to figure this out. I think everybody from all aspects of town were, at least in my opinion, the people I spoke to were all appalled by it, and the fact that the person that was doing it was caught was fantastic. And I can say I'm glad it wasn't anybody in Norton, so.
Thank you, Norton Police Department.
Yeah.
Yes.
They did an awesome job.
Yeah. So if anybody else has anything?
If I could, one quick thing that I forgot to bring up, reminded me when Jim was up there talking. So the other night, what happened at the town hall was the fire, some of the guys from the fire department were in the basement. They thought something ruptured because there was all kinds of water in the basement. Well, it turns out that when they were doing the work out back, they damaged a cover to one of the manholes out back, which went in the manhole, and branches, and dirt, and so, you know, Chris Sanner came back at night when they found this out, and called Sures, and they came and they cleaned up that manhole, and then they were snaking the pipe and brought up, they had also built in the pipe from the manhole to the tank when they were doing the gas line, so that was sore back up into the building. I will say, you know, Chris was great coming out there. The fire guys were great on what they did. They actually used some of their own equipment for pumping stuff out, which the contractor is going to replace, and also the OPM, I couldn't believe it, we were talking back and forth. He was out on the site at 9:00 at night talking to me, and they came right out the next morning and repaired the pipe, and we're back in business.
All right.
We're able to flush it.
But one quick question before we close this meeting. I apologize for the chair, but I missed in the other business, not anticipated within 48 hours, there was an email that we got about someone who missed the deadline for this meeting on the one-day liquor licenses. I don't know if we should discuss that. Can you approve it with, you know, pending review by the other branches? I don't know how that works.
What date was that for?
It was like next weekend or something.
I think it was till this weekend.
Was that the Petersons?
No.
Was the application.
I think it was the 20.
No, we didn't even have it.
It was in the email.
It was, it was an email with the request, but there was no application submitted, so they didn't even submit an application.
Well, I think the application, I thought the application was in email, but I, it's fine. It's, it was, you know, no notice, whatever. I just thought.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I'm going to pull it up too.
Was it today?
Yeah, that came in today, I think, right? Either today or yesterday. Riveting TV, folks.
I thought I remember reading something.
So they, well, they would need to have an application too, right? So if the application was there.
Was it part of it?
I didn't see it. My recollection, it was just the email saying that they, you know, they dropped the ball and.
Yeah, the application was attached as a PDF in there.
Was it?
Yeah.
What was it? Was it today or yesterday?
It was yesterday.
Ah, Cody Ward.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there it is, okay.
So it's 7/23, that's next weekend.
So I know we talked, Meg, actually you would know this. I know we talked about this in the past about these things coming in late, and what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, we need to sort of set, get the message out there that, you know, there's some processes that you have to follow, blah, blah, blah. Of course, we're not going to like deny someone a last-minute thing, but it screws us all up in terms of tiny-wise, so I think we just put it out there that unless there's like a dire emergency, we just got to follow the process, that's all.
All right, so I'll open it up. I mean, if you would like to vote on it, I guess we can.
Is there anything else that day that he's requesting? 12:30 to 4:00. You know, is there anything else?
Again, we always have, that's the one thing, if the fire chief and the police chief have always signed off on it before we approve anything.
Right. They're quite a morning.
Yeah, and it's 60 people.
It's a fundraiser. 100% of proceeds go to Smile Mass. What is that?
See, on the application is the 12th yesterday, so, I mean, to expect something to come in and get everyone, all the different department heads' signatures on it.
Helping families, raising children.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's sent up on it yet, so yeah, I personally wouldn't feel comfortable really on it.
Yeah, and that wasn't suggesting without, like, approving it entirely, without saying approved, pending review by those, but I was just, but.
I don't think they're here to speak on it, so we could even ask them, or any character references or anything.
I mean.
You know about them, we don't know.
To Denise's point, yeah.
We don't know any of them.
To Denise's point, we can, we could, we could approve it pending authorization by the building inspector, the fire chief, and the police chief.
Yeah, it is.
We could do that, yeah.
It could cause.
And that way, we won't have to, you know.
If it was something that required more in-depth review, I would be more concerned, but we're just, we usually just give a kind of quick review.
Yeah, it will, I mean, if the fire chief or the police chief or the building inspector aren't okay with it.
Right.
Right.
Then it won't go through.
But you're going to get contingent on those, right?
Right, yeah, we could do that.
So I would put that in the motion.
Well, I'll be, I'll be hit, sorry.
You're like a teacher at the end of the year, coming up to this.
I will motion to approve the one-day liquor license application for Cody and Katie Ward for July 23rd, 2023, from 12:30 to 4:00 at Edwardland Park, contingent upon approval by fire, police, and building inspector.
My second.
Second, sorry. I'm used to not, to motioning. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? All right. Is there anything else for the select board report to mail? Do we have any events coming up? Do you want to extend this meeting a little bit longer?
No, really not.
I don't know many events, actually.
All right, I've already approved all the warrants as written, so I approve all the warrants as written. Next meeting is Thursday, August 10th, 2023, 7:00 PM. Y'all better be here. We have no executive session, so with that, I'm looking for my favorite motion.
Hour and 19 minutes.
I'm still looking for my favorite.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
My second, my second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you guys. Thank you all.